What is going on beautiful people? Welcome back to the eight one seven podcast. This is our 100th and one episode. We took last week off. We thought if city council could take a break, I think the eight one seven podcast could take a break. Who's continuing the break is our good co-host Jimmy Sweeney. So we got the constant six man who comes into clutch. Anthony Hernandez, what's up, man? How are you doing?
What's happening, man? It's uh, I'm good. Good to be here. I'm glad Jimmy continues to allow me to fill in.
And uh, what's crazy is like this front paper of the Sunday paper couldn't be any more perfect to have you on. It was almost as if it was intentional. For those of you who get the paper still, the Star Telegram, it was about teacher shortages and how it did turn into a problem into big words, a catastrophe. And we have Anthony Hernandez here. You want to give the audience a little bit about what you do. We're going to give a little kind of your work on a, on a regular basis.
For sure. Yeah. Um, so I work for an educator prep program. So a, a program that teaches teachers how to teach and certifies teachers as well. So to see the Sunday paper today and know that it was all about teacher shortages and staffing issues and how districts are having to get more creative to help staff. It's literally my day to day work. So when you asked me to guess, you know, we kicked around some ideas and then I woke up this morning. Thank you, Star Telegram for getting my paper on time. And I opened it up at 5:40 this morning. I was like, oh, perfect timing. Uh, I can, I can speak to this stuff all day. So I have a lot of background in it. I know a lot about this. And um, while I don't work with Fort Worth ISD directly, um, I work with another large urban district Dallas ISD, and then I work with the Charter Network as well.
Yeah. So here's the thing too. Cool. Like, and I want you to know, like, if, if I was a pod person, I didn't have kids or I wasn't like, not another week about education. There's also a lot of political updates around how politics is getting to education. That's going to be also into this big story. You know, we have way barn. We have, um, you know, things we're trying to do around teens with guns and, and make kids more safe. There's just a lot of stuff that we will be talking about that's good to know about the big story. If you're new to the pod, we had a lot of, uh, actually last week's pod, uh, Tony was, uh, one of our biggest episodes. We had one of the most views episodes. So shout out to, uh, short-term rental coalition and the Texas coalition who's all about, you know, making more people aware about that. It was one of our biggest episodes by speed. Um, so that was really cool. And uh, so we're going to also be able to, uh, just for those of you who are new, we do three short stories and then one big story. And then we do our wins and losses. And we do this every week about the big city, Fort Worth, Texas and Tarrant County as a whole. So let's go ahead and dive into story number one. Story number one is that city council is coming back, people. I saw Michael Crane last, uh, this week and he had a good tan. So I think he went on a nice vacation. I don't know where. He made fun of my bald head, so I can give him a, uh, give him a, uh, that you could tell he had a tan this week. But, um, they will be resuming their meeting at 6:00 PM August 2nd after a month-long break. Council members will focus on three major tasks, finalizing the city's budget, allocating the last of the city's federal money, and crafting a new policy for short-term rentals like Airbnb and Verbo. So, um, again, we had a big interview last week about short-term rentals. And then we also talked to Michael Crane, um, about the rest of the federal money and how should we be spending it? So kind of going into it, there's a long list of things that they're going to be hitting. I mean, the budget, the full budget cycle is kind of like, they're going to meet all the way to September 27th. The city will hold the final public hearing on the city budget approval fees and changes, and discuss, uh, crime control and prevention district budget at September 13th meeting, and then the final budget and tax rate at another meeting, September 27th. So between September 27th and August 2nd tomorrow, uh, if you're listening to this Monday, you're going from, I mean, they look like Beethoven out here on, on, on travel. They got third, they got August 18th, August 22nd, August 23rd, August 25th, August 25th, August 26th, August 30th, September 8th, September 9th, September 13th, September 27th. Is the lineup. You'll see the actual lineup of what all those mean, but you have budget engagement meetings at different areas. Uh, we, we're talking about a budget working session as well. Um, so there's going to be a lot to go up with the city council. What of these things, you know, property taxes are going to be big. What are these things to you that you think is like, you know, this is the city council's first true like real year with the budget. It was kind of made for them last time. So this is like their, you know, I feel like their true chance at articulating, communicating and maybe providing some influence to the budget. What is your take?
Yeah, I think that, uh, first I'm, I'm, I think it's great that there is going to be so much like a, like a world tour, like you were talking about, like, and they're going to travel to so many locations. You've got far north Fort Worth, uh, with the Basswood location, a Handley location on the east side.
Southwest Community Center.
Yeah, Wedgewood right there by me. So I, I, you know, good job on, you know, making, eliminating the travel and eliminating the location as a barrier to getting your voices heard. So shout out to city council for that. I think that's cool. Uh, I don't know if that's par for the course, but regardless, y'all deserve some love. In terms of the priorities, I have no idea. I mean, I've never really set a, a, a budget for a city before. Um, I think that for me, it's about, you know, can you continue to show us what, I think there's a little bit of voter education, right? Show us what a city council budget looks like. Give us the idea of how this is compared to other cities that we are comparable to, maybe a Dallas, maybe a an Atlanta metro, right? Like what is it that we are comparing ourselves to? And then how do we use those cities priorities to shape our own? And then how do we take what voters are saying and then shape it? Or is this just an exercise in, oh, we're going to do all this transparency. We're going to show you all these things, but at the end of the day, the budget is the budget. The machine has to keep moving and this is just going to look like it always does. So I think that voter education is really important here. I'm sure that that's coming. As well as finding out what is, what does innovation look like in other large, major metro areas? And how does that inform what we're doing as a city council? Or in true Fort Worth fashion, do we just believe that we have all the answers because that's how we always operate?
Yeah, I definitely want to hit, um, just kind of a synopsis for those of you, maybe he did not hear the short-term rental, um, conversation. Because last week, uh, both, uh, there's meetings, uh, in-person meeting and a virtual meeting. And it was a good crowd and it was a good crowd on both sides. Uh, but I kind of want to show you the four options that the city is currently laying out on what to do with short-term rentals. Option one is keeping it the same. Um, this is other than the new registration requirements. This option maintains the status quo that bans short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods and limits them to commercial or mixed-use zoning districts. They will be allowed in parts of the central city, an area near Loop 820 and Interstate 35 West and southeast of I-20 and I-35 West. High density. So this means short-term rentals in, in this option will not be allowed in area zone for single-family homes, but will be allowed in two-family or multifamily zone lots, duplexes, condos, apartment buildings. Option three is density cap. This option would allow short-term rentals in resident neighborhoods, but limit them to five to 10% of a city block or roughly two houses per block. So this would be, you know, now they are in places like Wedgewood, Meadowbrook and, um, five to 10% of houses per block can have, uh, be short-term rentals. Option four was a 30-day limit. This option allows owners occupy short-term rentals. By right, meaning they don't require a zoning change either in certain neighborhoods or cities. Why would the same five to 10% limit on city blocks and apartment buildings? This is similar to Arlington's approach with limits permitted short-term rentals to an entertaining district near Six Flags Global Life and AT&T Stadium. It's not clear how those neighborhoods would determine, but, uh, the the city council said that they established specific short-term rental districts. It doesn't ban operators from renting out their properties for more than 39th in a year, but they would have to get a zoning change or conditional use permit to do so. So, um, we may not even have to look all the way to Atlanta to see what we're going to be talking about. We're just looking at Arlington who's making moves, you know, constantly. But yeah, so what you kind of can know here though, you know, on average, right? Property taxes, half of our budget. 50% of that goes to our public school system. And then you also have 62% of the general funds goes to police and fire. So that's a big chunk of, of, of city there of our funds. So it's really not a lot of wiggle room. I know you mentioned that you, you saw Dr. J, um, and, and, and they were talking and you had a conversation with him, uh, cause he's your councilman about the potential of using the, uh, using the American Rescue Plan funds for a one point I'm seeing here. What is that? 1.4 million or 1.9 million to with the collaboration with the United Way, Tarrant County and Fort Worth City Council member is proposing a partnership to support community groups working to end teen gun violence.
Yeah. Um, so like you said, city council's coming back. Top three things they're talking about, the budget, short-term rentals, and then what to do with the remainder of the American Rescue money. The American Rescue Plan, we, you know, Fort Worth received $173 million, um, of which there are $28 million left. And one of the proposals that I saw, uh, was from a shout out again to, you know, Dr. J, Dr. Williams, uh, for kind of leading this charge on the one-second collaborative, which is, uh, they're going to focus on intervention, counseling services, mentoring and community partnerships to curb teen and youth gun violence. Um, and the staggering statistic that they point out is that since 2016, over a hundred, uh, middle school to high school age youth have died from guns in, in Fort Worth. And he paints a really vivid picture when he says, you know, that's four to five full classrooms of students that we've lost since 2016. And it, it, it's, it's really, it's pretty devastating. So I, I hope that this is something that we see get passed. I hope that this is a, a top priority for how we spend the rest of those budgetary dollars. Uh, I'm not well-informed on what other priorities there are for that. I think one of them is a housing project. But this seems to be to me, I'm like, listen, you can't, we can't invest enough in, in, in our youth and, and their safety and their wellbeing in this community. So let's make it a priority. So yeah, shout out to Dr. J, my councilman.
I saw you saw, you saw, you saw him at the gym doing work as well.
Listen, man, this dude is in the gym getting swole. I'm, I'm, I'm just going to be like, all right, like, I can't work out with my councilman. I'm like, you're already doing such great things in the city. Now you're making me look bad in the gym. It's not cool, but yeah, he's, uh, uh, putting in work in multiple ways, it sounds, it looks like.
Yeah, I saw, um, uh, Crane is not my council member, uh, for my district, but uh, I'm on the small business task force and that's where I saw him last week. There's, there's, um, a research study coming out about how, what's the amount of processes it takes to register a restaurant, a barber shop and a couple of other businesses and they're comparing. And what's the cost compared over cities? And so part of this task force, they had their researchers in and you know, I, I run a very interesting business that doesn't have a, an in-person place that people need to go. And you know, I, I kind of said something like, is, is restaurants and small business and, and barber shops, what we should be, um, aspiring local entrepreneurs to start? Like, are those really the businesses that are lucrative? Like what percentage of those are actually profitable? What percentage of those are, are sustainable and successful? And, um, Crane, he made a joke. He's like, well, obviously, you know, you don't go to a barber shop. He digged me hard. It was pretty good and everyone bust out laughing, uh, but it was funny. And there were several eight one seven podcasts members, uh, well, guests in there, you know, with the Cameron Cushman, uh, with U, UTL Science Center. Um, you had, you had Sparkyard there with Marco and you had Robert Sterns, which, uh, is also going to be on the pod next week. So we're going to talk more there.
Ooh, solid tease.
Yeah. So it's just cool to see, uh, the eight one seven podcasts, uh, also being able to see the people, um, who, who are doing the real work. So, uh, let's go ahead and talk about, um, the city we brought up earlier, Arlington. Um, this is, I thought was an important story. It's an environmental story. Um, it, uh, it's in the Fort Worth Report. Haley Sampson and shout out to the last, the last, um, segment that was Harrison Mantis and, uh, the Fort Worth Report's big story as well, uh, which was, uh, written by Rachel Burn, Burnett. Now, um, this one here is Arlington officials are set to okay gas drilling without a public hearing. This to me is kind of crazy and interesting because I don't know how we would respond to something like that in Fort Worth. Arlington's west side, west side will soon to be home to 11 new gas wells. So what's important about this to Fort Worth? That's our, you know, closest part to us, right? Cause east side Fort Worth goes into west side Arlington. With the city staff planning approved new drilling without a public city council hearing. T E P Barnett's permit application comes nearly seven months after council members narrowly denied the company's attempt to drill within several hundred feet of an East Arlington daycare center and homes. You remember that? We talked about that story. It got denied, um, and, uh, no longer went through. The application required a public hearing process. Now, this time, T E Barnett's proposed new wells at 3701 West Interstate 20 with, um, which is established drill zones and will not require a public hearing, uh, because they are established drill zones. Uh, instead, staff will administratively approve the company's application to drill more at the Brooder site, um, as soon as this week. So council members have already approved the drill zone for the pad site in 2020 when it was owned by Chesapeake Energy. Now this, you know, this French company is running, uh, the site. So it's because it was already approved. They're saying, hey, we can get going, but people are not happy about this. Um, council member have the power to request further discussion and issues about this. And so we're going to see if they're actually going to start drilling. Uh, the city should also take in new data, uh, about the chronic health issues, child asthma. There's a lot going on and there's a lot of people standing up against this. So it'll be interesting to see what Arlington actually does. Does it allow T E P Barnett to drill these 11 areas on the west side of Arlington? Or will they listen to, um, their constituents? So I don't know if you really have anything to say. I don't know how you would feel if you were, you know, I know you're a metroplex native and you've been around, uh, the area. I don't know what your thoughts are or comments you've seen around, um, drilling in your lifetime.
I think for me, looking at this article in particular, the 2012 decision to say like, look, the approval is already there. I think it's just on Arlington, uh, city council members and city council constituents to hold their council and say, hey, look, if nothing else, we want to hear you raise the questions. We want, we think it, it warrants another discussion, right? I'm not talking about, you know, oh, we, we shouldn't drill and this is a bad idea and all that. I, I just think that since 2012, it's a decade old.
A lot has happened.
A lot has happened. A lot of new information is available. And to your point, a lot of data is available. Make an informed decision and make sure that it's right. Not only for the business, because I understand that, you know, businesses are great for cities, but let's also make sure it's the right move for the community. So if nothing else, I hope that the city council says, let's raise the questions before we just, you know, allow this to, allow this to continue without the vote.
2012, that's like pre-TikTok.
Yeah. And you know, good, good luck talking to me about this. Worst millennial ever.
All right. So let's go to a short story, number three. Um, this one I, I saw in the national news. Uh, in Bloomberg, it's Samsung eyes $200 billion expansion of chip plants in Texas. As we've seen, uh, the Biden and the Democrats has had some successful wins, um, the past couple of weeks, recently with the, the new chip bill and as well as a new climate bill. But Samsung, um, is looking to build 11 chip, um, chip factories, um, and are looking to do so in Texas. The manufacturing facilities, um, is a leading market of member, of memory chips. And they laid out a potential plan to spend almost $200 billion on 11 plants in a series of filings in the state. Two of the units will be in Austin and nine would be in Taylor, Texas, where Samsung has already unveiled. Nine would be in Taylor, Texas, where Sam has already unveiled plans to spend 17 billion on advanced facilities. The company isn't committed to building the new facilities and hypothetical proposals could change under various circumstances. The first new production facility will not start operating until around 2034, even if Samsung does proceed. Samsung revealed the plans in part to buy of Texas financial incentives ahead of the program's expiration of this year. They currently have specific plans and look 2034. So the reason why I kind of bring this up is to me is like, how can even more of DFW get into the chip conversation? How can we get more into, uh, this place, right? Like they say that nine are going to Tyler, Texas. They're saying that 11, but it seems like there's that flexibility. So me, it just seems like with the new chip bill nationally, with Senator Cornyn being one of the lead, um, Republicans on that bill, making that happen. I just would like to see, we already have a lot of electrification happening in, in Fort Worth and Tarrant County, uh, with linear labs, MP materials, mining, which is, which is bringing some people. I'm really interested, especially when we talked to, uh, uh, Robert Sterns. What does strategy look like around a semiconductor area for Texas as a whole? And where does Fort Worth play in it? Because it seems like a lot of moving things. The US is moving toward a 52 billion federal program that provide grants and incentives to boost the American semiconductor industry. And I just feel like it would be unwise for us to not have involvement. Leave that one alone.
I'm not going to touch that, but yes, I agree with you 100%. Uh, we should be, make sure that we are a part of that conversation. Uh, and we're not reacting to something that is clearly a national trend.
Yeah. 100%. Well, let's get into the big story, which you'll have stuff to say about good cert. Like she'd go ahead and just lead us into the big story. Um, and just give us your take of everything going on in the Fort Worth ISD around teacher readiness, um, teacher, um, pipeline and just kind of what's going on, uh, with the city.
Yeah. So, um, if you watch local news, either through Fox four, NBC five, um, I'm an NBC five guy, but they, there was already a story about the teacher hiring fairs happening in Fort Worth ISD. And if you're, I don't know, if you're, if you're a parent and you might, you watch those news stories, you might be thinking to yourself, wow, they're still hiring. I thought school started in like a week or two, like kids, my teachers are going back to school and children are shortly after that. And we're offering teachers, uh, positions on the spot at these district hiring fairs because, uh, we have a shortage. So Silas Allen got the, uh, cover story of the Sunday Star Telegram and, uh, you know, the big, the big headline here is job stress and difficult working conditions have teachers looking for the exits. North Texas schools have to figure out how to replace them. So for context here, July the first was Fort Worth ISD's deadline to submit a resignation. So, and you know, a teacher says, hey, I'm leaving the district. I found another career opportunity. I'm out. As of that July 1st deadline, we've increased, there was an increase of 50% from the previous year, meaning 1,084 teachers said to Fort Worth ISD, I will not be back next year. That is an incredible number of teachers.
And 722 same point last year.
Right. Yeah. 722 to it. So over a thousand, right? So again, like that, that huge 50% increase year over year. One of the things that was discussed in the article too, is that these problems have, they stem back decades. So the, I think the low hanging fruit here is to talk about COVID and COVID is most certainly a factor, right? Later in the article, they talk about a research study that was done by the Rand Group. Well, the Rand Group was surveying teachers in January at the height of the Omicron wave, right? Well, anytime a teacher, um, was infected with COVID or needed to be out, that puts a strain on other people. Children require supervision, period. And when a teacher is out for a legitimate health concern like COVID, right? You're putting other teachers in a, in a bad position. They have to double up classes. They have to work during their conference periods, right? So they're not getting in contact with parents. They're not grading. They're not lesson planning. They're not working in their professional learning communities. Instead, what they're doing is they're being flipped to another room during that same day and they're spending time with a group of students that they don't know. That's not just true for teachers. It's librarians. This is school administrators. This is school professional staff, uh, education assistants, you name it. So staffing continues to be, uh, an issue. So again, the, the, the pandemic exacerbated some of the problems, but it didn't create them. And it, it, it's just kind of crazy to me that now suddenly everyone is talking about this issue that if you've worked in the industry, we've known for years. We can't produce enough teachers from high-quality programs to step into the classroom. And when I say a high-quality program, I'm talking about your university programs, your residency models, programs that are designed to help people like this is your career. We want you to be great at your career because students deserve teachers who are, uh, ready to go day one, who have the skills, who have the, the, the tools that they need to be successful in the system long-term. But what we're seeing is that the majority are coming from alternative certification programs who are not as rigorous as some of the programs and Dr. Penya, Raul Penya is the chief talent officer for Fort Worth ISD. He, he realizes that they're in a rut, like the, he says, we're not in an ideal situation. Referring to people covering classes when there are staffing shortages. That is not an ideal situation. Recruiting earlier, so they, they began ramping up recruitment efforts in January and we're still at a deficit for teachers. That is not an ideal circumstance. And then finally, where are you finding your teachers to come through? Well, they're not coming from the university programs. They're not coming from four-year models. They're not coming from residencies. They're not coming from high achieving, high performing teacher certification programs. And that is not an ideal circumstance.
Yeah. I'm saying, uh, only about 9,000 of the state's new teachers in 2021, 2021 school year came from traditional four-year programs. And that you may have said this, but the roughly 10% of Texas teachers left the workforce each year, which according to the figures from the Texas Education Agency, Texas isn't far out of line with the national trends of 8%. We employ between 350,000, 375,000 teachers. So we got to replace 35,000 teachers annually.
Right. And so think about that, right? So if, if 35,000 teachers leave the profession annually, and that's an average, right? So that's not taking in this year into consideration, which, and this is not a Fort Worth problem. This is a national problem. Talked, I've had the privilege to talk to folks in Philadelphia, Baltimore, uh, Washington DC, uh, our friends across, uh, the freeway in Dallas. This is something that is not Fort Worth specific. This is definitely across the board. But if 35,000 teachers annually leave the profession and only 9,000 of them are coming from four-year university programs, right? Which are all doing a really great job of giving teachers the tools that they need to be successful, right? You spend four years learning how to do a career. You're probably going to be pretty good at it. They're not, we're not even scratching the surface of, okay, so where are the other several, you know, the tens of thousands of additional folks coming from? And again, we're looking at some of these alt cert programs and, and, and not to disparage people who got an alternative certification. I was an alternative certified teacher myself. Some of those programs do enough and then some of them are not. The deregulation on those, the, the inconsistencies and the, and the low demand across the low accountability, not low demand, the low accountability for them across multiple programs, you know, there's almost 200 different programs that you can get certified with in the state of Texas. You're going to get very mixed results, very different results. So to that end, um, this is not a new problem. This is a problem that we've been staring down for a very long time and COVID, like so many other parts of our society, the digital divide, the healthcare divide. Now we're seeing the teachers crisis. This has been a crisis for a decade. We're now being faced with the reality of what are you going to do when you can't staff a school year? What are you going to do when your child's classroom goes from 25 kids to 35 kids next year? Now it's a crisis. Now it's a problem and I hope it remains on the top of people's minds, uh, going forward into the school year.
Yeah. And it just seems like, you know, both of us in, in, in the education space in some capacity. To me, it also looks at, you know, the more and more I hear principals playing substitute teacher, the more and more counselors I hear playing substitute teacher. And like, all these other people who are there to do the other things to support teachers now have to all be teachers. So even just like the overall infrastructure of supporting the ecosystem, it, it just waves into effect of like, you can't think of the long-term when you got the short-term. Like, you know, so when everyone has to be short-term today, we are all teachers. No one ever thinks about the long-term of what capacity are we building up strategically?
Sure.
So yeah, it makes, yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
You and I have had this discussion off mic before of, um, school systems, right? And, and, and you know, credit to, to Dr. Penya in, in Fort Worth ISD. Starting recruitment efforts earlier in January, right? So folks are like, well, why not even start earlier? Why isn't this a priority from day one? One, I'm sure that it is, but you have to ramp up those efforts when you have an idea of who is and isn't coming back. And what a teacher's feeling in January shifts what they're feeling in March. And in March, when principals start going and asking, hey, are you coming back? Can I get a letter of intent? You know, can I, can I start to build out a staffing matrix for what's going to happen next year? Well, that data from March to July 1, changes drastically. Teachers shift within the district, right? For a number of reasons. They want a different grade level. They want to work at a different campus closer to home. They may switch school districts. There's a number of things that they might do. Where it puts human capital offices and talent management offices in a bad seat is you, you have to, you can't prepare for those numbers. You know, you can in most years, right? It's eight to 10% according to TEA and the, and the, uh, Center for National Education Statistics. Where that becomes challenging though, is when you have the, the occasional blip year like this year. And what did they say? What did they say exactly in the article? Because there are other opportunities, because there is a strong economy, there are plenty of opportunities and people are leaving teaching. Again, to your point, when everyone's on mile 23, so everyone's just thinking about what's right in front of them. I'm on mile 23 of a 26-mile marathon. And all I can think about is tomorrow. All I can think about is my next step. All I can think about is this thing that's directly in front of me. What we have completely failed to do is talk about, you know, how do you make teaching a profession that is so attractive that people don't leave when there are other options? How do they, how do we get, make it such an attractive profession that they don't leave the second a new marketing firm pops up or a new consulting business comes up or a new hotel opens and I can go make more money with less stress, um, doing work that is, uh, equally as meaningful to me.
Yeah. And the pandemic had, you know, a three, it's a three-tier pandemic. You had the academic, um, piece. So kids losing, needing more academic time with teachers. You have the emotional mental health piece that is being big. Um, and on top of that, the economic ramifications. And on top of that, the economic ramifications, uh, that has impacted families or impacted, um, you know, just kids pathways by not under, not being able to have the academic and the mental health support. So like, not only are their classrooms are being bigger, now you have this three-tier pronged system that you're all trying to fit in the short class time, right? And then, you know, what can a principal do? What can a counselor do on top of having to do all this? It just seems like a very big challenge on top of what we also mentioned in some other areas. What are, what are some things that we're seeing in Texas that are even making it more difficult in Texas for teachers to thrive?
Yeah, there was, so there was a couple, I'll, I'll take this in several approaches. One, I want to, I'll refer to the article again, where, you know, they talked about student discipline and student accountability being troublesome. So there was a retired, a retired teacher, Stacy Bogle, who was formerly at Arlington Heights High School. And she says, you know, she sits on these disciplinary panels for student accountability where when students don't meet the expectations, they, they're, they're held accountable. Well, in one instance, she said she saw 100 absences forgiven for a student. For those who don't know, the school year is 187 days in most districts. So the student missed the majority of the school year was forgiven those absences and, and, and that has impacts, not only A on that, most importantly, on that student's education and what they actually learned. But also imagine being a teacher who found out that a kid missed your class, virtual, online, in person, who knows, but they missed your class 100 times. What does it say to you when a panel of people who didn't consult you one time about this student's academic growth? Find out that that student was still able to gain the credit for your class. How valued do you honestly feel by your community when you find out that your job can be replaced by a panel who says, it's okay, 100 days out of your classroom, out of 187 days school year, it's okay. So the student discipline and accountability issues were brought up, um, student discipline issues, I think, you know, people talked about, then to your point, the mental health associations with, uh, what's provided in schools and those issues becoming more rampant. And then other issues that we're seeing in the state of Texas, you know, and, and Silas didn't bring this up in the article. And I understand why, but if, look at this holistically. When you go back to August of the, of the last school year, schools went from, oh my goodness, they're, they're so heroic. Look at our teachers pivoting and creating all this online education. They, they changed their whole operational model. And everyone lauded them as heroes. And then August 2021, or excuse me, 2020, uh, yeah, 2021 happened. And suddenly school systems are public enemy number one. And the most, one of the most boring things, school board meetings became nationally, national news. They're on TikTok. They're on Instagram. They're on, uh, national, local news channels. And that we're demonizing critical race theory, equity. We're starting to politicize these things that are going on in schools. I'm sure that had no impact on teacher retention whatsoever, but neither here nor there. Then we see, um, in a female dominated profession, um, the overturning of Roe v. Wade. And there are districts who don't offer because of, again, the short school year and the way the contracts are set up, who aren't in a position to offer maternity leave and benefits and I'm sure that there are probably some complications that come along with that as well. And then most recently, and again, not mentioned in the article, but I don't think can be ignored, Uvalde. And the conversations by including, you know, our freaking sheriff, Sheriff Wayborn, talking about the quote, many, many Texas teachers who are seeking to carry guns. So you can look at Kaylee Johnson's article in the Wednesday Star Telegram talking about this. But this idea of, you know, they're not safe in schools. They, you know, they're, the arming teachers, all of these things have a compounding effect on teachers. Teachers don't leave classrooms because of the students that are sitting in front of them. They got into it because of the students and sitting in front of them. What they are having to fight though, is an uphill battle of, uh, low pay, low accountability, higher expectations, uh, more demands from the failures of society, right? To supplement mental health care, supplement meal care, uh, supplement, uh, safety, student safety, right? Let's, let's just arm the teachers. Let's just strap them all up, right? And eventually you have to say, no more. What that has also created though, so those are all the negatives. Here are the positives. What we're seeing now though are, uh, districts getting creative. So we'll start outside and we'll work our way in. Uh, the rural districts are moving to four-day work weeks, right? So Jasper, Chico, Mineral Wells are saying, if we can't compete monetarily with people, let's give them back that, you know, asset that we're all chasing more time. So we're going to a four-day work week in some of these rural districts to, uh, compete against the larger urban districts, your Fort Worth ISD, your Dallas ISD, your, your Houston's.
Does that mean the kids also go to school for four days?
That's right.
Gotcha.
What, what it will do is it'll still yield the same number of hours in school with longer days or a longer school year. So the number of hours recognized by that campus, the students are going to get the same number of hours, but it's going to change the, one of the days we're moving. So it's innovative. We'll see if it works, could blow, you know, could totally blow up in our faces. It may work for those districts, but rural districts, that is their creative solution for right now. For the suburban districts, there was a, uh, the chief talent officer, excuse me, I may be getting that title wrong, but from Keller ISD, they too are seeing more summer resignations than the last five years. So they still have a 500 professional staff members vacancies. And, you know, again, mentioning the strong economy, people are leaving. And I think that's, that's a thing that I keep getting a hiccup on. So this is rural districts getting creative, suburban districts feeling the heat. And then you get into the large urban districts. What are they doing? How are they getting creative? Couple of things. One, um, offering incentives and bonuses, right? Just like any other district, you know, just like any other industry, I need more people to join. So what should I do? I should incentivize this. I think the short-term vision of that is great. It's going to solve an immediate problem. Is it a sustainable financial model? Is this going to be something that we see year over year? Can I always offer a signing bonus? Can I always offer that incentive for, for teaching in those high need areas? And then, um, seeing districts pay for certification for eligible candidates. So if you commit to Fort Worth ISD, uh, for three years, there's an opportunity for you to earn your certificate, but they're looking for you in a high need area, which is candidly, a lot of them, elementary, English as a second language, bilingual education, sciences, secondary sciences, secondary mathematics, um, English language arts teachers and special education teachers. So those incentives I think are a great way to get people in the door. But what about the teacher who's been there for 10 years? What incentive are they eligible for? Um, are, are we seeing year over year bonuses? Are we seeing better trajectories towards, you know, gaining more money? And then solving finally, the stress problem. There was a statistic in the article that 85% of teachers and principals report frequent job-related stress compared to 35% of general working adults. Now again, the caveat there is that the Rand Corporation ran this in January, um, you know, during the height of the Omicron wave. But imagine going into your, your child's school or any school, right? You know, even if you're not, you don't have children, going into a school and eight out of 10 people you, you meet in the hallway say, I am overwhelmed with job stress. Higher than like a normal amount. That is definition toxic environment. And when we publicize this and when we're not changing the narrative, we're, we're putting Band-Aids on things. We're not changing the school year. We're not meeting teachers where they are. We're not changing what education looks like as a whole. It's just, this is the job. Here are the expectations. You're going to have more students. You're going to have less help. And the challenges are the challenges and you're going to have to continue to figure it out. So I don't envy anybody's, um, seat. You know, Dr. Penya or any of the human capital offices, principals who are having to make choices around, staff sizes and trying to meet their teachers where they are, but also keeping students and children from top of mind and saying, I understand that you're stressed out and that you're saying you can't have any more students in your room. But where are they going to go if not into your classrooms? So this is a long-term problem. This is not a Fort Worth ISD problem. This is an everyone problem. But in Fort Worth, I am curious to see what other great listeners who listen to the eight one seven podcast, where's the business community going to get involved? Where are we going to see incentives that go beyond what the school district is able to do with limited funding? When are we going to see some housing partnerships from all these new apartments that are popping up? Let me see some discounted rent. Let me see, wait, you know, waiving some fees for our teachers. Let's stop pretending that we treat our teachers as heroes of our community and, you know, not all heroes wear cape, uh, capes. And let's actually start to put our community action where our mouth is. Otherwise, we're going to, we are going to continue to recruit and retain teachers who might not be fully prepared, might be coming from states that have, uh, less rigorous requirements, which it's crazy to think that there are some, but there are a few, less rigorous requirements to come teach students in our classrooms who need them the most to be as effective as possible.
And we also got to stop making stories around, you know, protesters rallying against Fort Worth schools equity program. This says about 50 people gathered at a liberty rally and some spoke out during the school board meeting, public comment. 50 people? I mean, that's as much shows up at a birthday party.
I had 50 people at my baby shower fam, like, and we give, yeah, and we're giving this noise.
Space. Like, I think like, the, like you said, like the pandemic to me made people celebrate teachers because parents realize how hard it was. But then we, we thought we were going to come out the pandemic with teachers being celebrated, but then politics got into the education system and public school system. And to me that, you know, giving noise to stuff like, oh, there was a riot against equity in schools. And 50 people show up like, we, we should, we don't need to be worrying about that if we're not, you know, cause that's not, you know?
Yeah. And, and I, I'm glad you bring up that point of like the noise around it. There is a lot of noise around public education. It is a behemoth. The finances are difficult to understand. Um, school boards have, you know, limited, uh, limited, um, accountability, like they have limited roles and what they can actually change. But the amount of noise that teachers had to suffer through this year and the amount of poor press that getting, becoming a teacher is getting in the United States is exacerbating a problem that we are seeing firsthand today. We don't have enough teachers, not enough people entering the career. If the noise continues, if 50-person liberty rallies are going to continue to get headlines, they're going to scare people away from the profession. I know because again, we're, working with an educator prep program, um, our recruitment is down. Just like everybody else, just like Fort Worth ISD and we are like them coming up with incentives, trying to find ways to, to recruit people into the organization, trying to find ways to get people to move into Texas and, and teach. We recruit nationally. Um, not everybody who joins our program is, is from the DFW metroplex. In fact, most people are from, uh, out of state. And the noise that they see is CRT, Uvalde, let's put guns on teachers' hands. Let's, you know, let's continue to do these kinds of things that are asking them to do way more than any person in any other field is being asked to do. On top of what is already a daunting job, which is can you put knowledge in small people's brains and teach them how to apply it for the rest of their lives?
Yeah. Well, I'm glad we had you, Anthony, here, um, because I don't think this story would have been as articulated and be able to have that perspective without you here. So thank you for coming in and giving that insight to the eight one seven podcasts. Peeps and realizing the importance.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Uh, I'm passionate about it. Hopefully, uh, folks, it wasn't just a long rambling rant, but I do, I am a firm believer that, uh, what's happening in our public education system impacts all of us every single day. Our children are in fact, they deserve the best, regardless if you have kids in this school district or not. All kids in all districts, suburban, rural, urban, you name it. They deserve for, uh, people to be paying attention and, and care about what's happening in them. Uh, and what we're seeing right now is it's, it's not good, it's not good policy. So thank you all. Appreciate, appreciate the time, EJ.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, well, let's go ahead and dive into wins and losses. All right. So the win I'm going to go with is something that I think is a, is just really, um, cool and important. Something that I feel like is real work that happens in cities that I just think it's cool. And I mean, I, I thought this was a really well-written story by Haley Samson in the Fort Worth Report. It was about how a simple device has removed 6,000 plus pounds of trash from Fort Worth waterways this year. So it's a private donor, um, who crewed members for, uh, by the Presbyterian Night Shelter's Inspire program. They've spent the past four years removing trash from Fort Worth's most polluted parks. Although the organization has seen enormous progress during this period, Inspire leaders also realized the limits of manual pickup. So they're trying to increase the amount of, uh, pickup that they can. Uh, and so what they did is, you, 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 Inspire explored the possibility of installing water goats, also known as litter boom or traps into bodies of water across Fort Worth. The device uses dense foam bayous and a net to collect trash floating on the surface of water without harming fish or other wildlife. Using their own fire, uh, funds, Inspire purchased and installed six water goats earlier this year in high litter zones, which were Willow Lake, Foster Creek, Trailhead, Clear Fork. That effort inspired the Trinity River Authority of Texas to search for grant opportunities to fund more water goats in Tarrant County. With the help of $39,600 from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, 10 more water goats were installed in May to improve water quality in the Village Creek Lake Arlington watershed, which covers 143 miles of North Texas. The grant along with support from the Trinity River Authority, the Tarrant Regional Water District, UT Arlington and the city of Fort Worth funds Inspire's installation and maintenance of the city water goats, which impacted estimated 21,128 acres of the Village Creek Lake of Arlington watershed. So just this, I mean, there's so much more work to be done. Each device removes 121 pounds of trash each month, only up to more than 6,000 pounds of litter collected so far, according to the city Fort Worth estimates. They are looking to scale. They're looking to grow and expand. And when I think of my ideas and, and, and funds, and we talk about having American Rescue Plan funds, I'm wondering if this could be something that could get some of that support? Because it just seems like something that is working, something that's sustainable, that's scalable, cost-effective, um, and keeps Fort Worth looking beautiful.
Yeah, it seems like a no-brainer. Like it seems like it's doing a really great job at a very low cost. And, uh, as someone who frequents the river, uh, yeah, I think that's great. It's a hell of a win.
What is your win?
My win is, uh, as a, as a supporter of this brand, uh, for a very long time, for better or for worse. It's been, you know, uh, the Nike contract that, you know, they, they, the Fort Worth area PMG secured a Nike ad contract worth between 300 and 400 million dollars, right? And then it's not like they just picked our names out of a hat. There was, uh, a good amount of global research done on what firm is going to be selected by Nike for their Nike North America, uh, contract. And they picked a Fort Worth-based company. That's huge. That national name, brand recognition, that global name, brand recognition, uh, seeing the opportunity and the talent that's right here in the city that we love, heck of a win.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I, I'm thinking of what's the power of, I'm assuming that means these Nike people coming from Portland will be showing up to Fort Worth often. You know, somebody from their reps are going to be showing up to Fort Worth often to have some in-person meetings. And PMG is going to have to cater and showcase Fort Worth. So how cool is it to get, you know, a trendy front-forward brand like Nike in the city of Fort Worth, having some of their leadership, walking around the city potentially? You know, and them having an experience that they maybe not have, you know, been in Fort Worth before without this. So who knows what this gets, uh, you know, lead into, um, from just us now hosting Nike in Fort Worth? Because it's not just about the contract to put ads on, but now we're selling Fort Worth to the internal people of Nike.
Yeah, which is, yeah, incredible. So very, very big win. Awesome.
Yeah. So my, uh, loss, um, is basically something that we all seeing is it is hot outside and, um, the Tarrant County issued a disaster declaration for wildfires. We see neighborhoods burning. We see during July 4th, having hundreds of wildfires that the, uh, that the fire department were having to take out across the county. So with Tarrant County experiencing our drought conditions today, Judge Glenn Whitley signed on Friday an emerging disaster declaration. The extreme hot and dry conditions pose the threat of large and fast-moving wildfires, which have the potential to endangering lives and damaging property on large scale. The Texas government code chapter 14 gives the county judge the power to declare a local disaster within the county. If the threat of disaster is imminent, the magnitude of the potential damage and the, uh, rapid repeating, which such fire could escalate to major proportions constitute an immense threat of disaster and has been experienced in Tarrant County previously. Here's why this is important, um, and why this is a loss. I mean, I guess you could say it's a win as well, but it's a loss because like, right, we're, we're dealing with losing homes already. We've seen that experience. But, but at the same time, we're now seeing that we're having to declare, um, this need so that we can maybe pursue avenues of reimbursement and financial assistance. However, you know, both the state, uh, and the county must meet fiscal thresholds to be eligible for FEMA assistance. But you're trying to tell me that the danger of what we're going through now is going on the radar of FEMA? This is a loss for Tarrant County.
Yeah, it absolutely is. And, uh, I think just across the country, right? Like the amount Yeah, it absolutely is. And I think just across the country, right? Like the amount of wildfires that we're seeing, the Chuck Mountain stuff, right?
They're seeing floods in like Kentucky and like, it's like wild out here. They're legit.
I know, I know. Um, my loss, way less serious, but it is a personal loss for me. And that is that beginning on August the 15th, TexRail is offering long-term paid parking at five of its stations for only $5 a night. Why is that a loss? Because if you're like me, you, you've just been wilding out and leaving your car. You've just been leaving your car overnight at these TexRail stations, just banking on nothing happening to it when you, when you take flights and you go to the airport. So jokingly, I think it's great. I think it's, you know, hopefully going to get more ridership on TexRail, but personally, that's digging into my pockets because see the way that my airport trips are set up is I just go to the airport, I, I take the train and I leave my car there full free. But at $5 a night, it's still a really good deal. So selfishly, it's a loss, but I think long-term this will probably turn into a dub.
Yeah, still, yeah, still a deal, right?
It's still a deal.
Cause like even trying to do like the remote parking at the airport, it's like, yeah, it's like an hour. I mean, it's like, as long as a trip, it takes like, you get a three-hour flight, then it takes 45 minutes to get your bag. Then you got to get on this bus. 45 minutes later, you finally get to your car.
Right. And then you gotta drive home.
Yeah. And then you gotta drive home.
And you gotta hope there's not traffic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
TexRail says, how about you get on this air-conditioned thing for $2.50 and I will drop you off in the heart of the city? So yeah, that continues to be a really cool thing for me. I personally, I love using it, but I just hope it doesn't impact my parking situation.
Well, guys, thank you for listening to the 817 podcasts. We're excited to be back getting into these episodes. We got the city budgets coming up, so I'm sure we're going to be doing a lot of discussions around that. We got November around the corner with the, who, who are going to be our leaders? Posts, some of our current leaders like Glenn Whitley and all that stuff. So what's next for us with Tim O'Hare and Deborah Peoples? And then you got Abbott and Paxton and Beto. Who knows what's happening? Lot of campaign funding and dollars in Texas. I don't know if you also were, had the chance, we didn't dive into it, but there's that CNN show that was on that gave some national exposure about the heavy pockets, the deep pockets that fund Texas's GOP. Worth a watch. Me and my wife have it recorded and going to watch it this week. But hey, this is the 817 podcast. We focus on Fort Worth. Looking forward for all of you who are fans of Fort Worth, new to Fort Worth, see 817 podcast as a source to you and we'll be keep delivering Monday news. Next week, it's going to be Robert Sterns with the Economic Development Director. He's been on the pod before, but there's been a ton of updates around what the economic development crew is doing to recruit companies and bring awareness nationally to, to other companies who are looking to move to bigger spaces, new cities and how to put Fort Worth on the map. So we're going to have a lot of good conversations there. Boom shakalaka. Thank you so much for listening to the podcast.
817, love y'all. Thanks for having me.